Gives me a little bit cake in terms of the name of the project, but it's for the forty units. That is being been expected. There are several funding mechanism in terms of this project. However, I think they've received a substantial investment support from both the state and and probably the city. And then five oh one Cherry Avenue, sixty nine supported units, wetland and tents. It's on six oh one and six oh one Cherry Avenue. Those are new project, probably. I know that wetland is a UVA project. It's gonna have several units, gonna be a mixed use development, so we're expecting them. They already give us given us a call to discuss the project. In terms of funding request, we are probably expecting them to give us another call sometime next year when the next cycle begins. So this is where we are in terms of affordable housing. And the performance of the city council and the city of Charlottesville in terms of addressing this critical compelling public purpose looks good. And I think, or we think rather, that in the next several years, the city council and the committee will start seeing the dividends. You know, the investment in terms of the prices of house and rent along the homeownership. Thank you. We'd be glad to feel the question by the city council at this point. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you both for the presentation. It was very informative. I'm really glad to see that we're doing well in this regard. I know we can always do do more and do better. One question I had for you is, so I saw that twenty roughly twenty million dollars, twenty four million dollars of the total overall contribution that we're counting has to do with Midway Manor, is that right?
Yeah, twenty three million dollars.
And we didn't actually put in the twenty three million dollars. We enabled the bond, something to do with our pass through something with our economic development.
Yes, sir. What the council did was the affordability period was expiring. And usually the affordability period, if it expires, that means the owner of the project can release the entire unit into the market rate unit. And essentially what we're gonna have is probably ninety eight households that currently live in that development being homeless. So the city council intervened because instead of putting it out as a market rate unit, they decided they were going to renovate. And for them to get a cheap financing to make the continue to make the project affordable, council intervened and authorized CRHA to issue a bond in the amount of twenty three million dollars to en- to enable the renovation of the project essentially. Ensuring that the next thirty years, the project will continue to be affordable.
So the bond for that was issued against CRHA's portfolio?
But CRHA has no financial liability and it doesn't impact their budget in any way, so it is essentially a past.
Yeah, I'm just, I think it's great. I was involved a little bit on the edges of those conversations, I guess, a year ago, maybe. I'm just, we've added it to our our bar chart, kind of bumps our bar chart up. So I just want to make sure we're all in an agreement that it belongs in our in our win column or just our our or in our assist column.
Yeah, it's without the city money authorization to issue that bond and nobody else was able to do it. Essentially, their option would be to go to market rate or seek a higher financing rate somewhere else. And then we'll have problem with the current tenant. Essentially, the same exercise with acquisition of dogwood in a way. But in this case, the city approved a hundred percent of the rehabilitation.
Okay. And so the muse, for example, I don't guess we would see that on our CIP list because that's something where I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is what counts as, you know, a win for us versus just sort of an assist. So I'll say a dunk shot versus.
Well, let me respond to it in this way. So that of that, Alex had highlighted that out of thirty three point three million that was requested in the R five process, not necessarily requested, detailed, because it's a request for information, you know, it's a non-funding practice that we that we do concurrently with our citywide NOFA for housing related activities that we send out to the development community to, hey, let us know what your five year projection looks like, right? From that twenty two list, a number of those projects, either through a li tech application or through a CAF or some other type of mechanism applied for funding. And so that amount, say, for example, five oh one cherry was on that FY twenty two list. They've since then cycled back and completed a process. And the allocated or the commitment to that project is within that twenty nine point five million. So a lot of it has to do with the applicant, the project developer coming back and completing the process. Muse, if my memory serves right, they submitted information in the FY twenty two RFI, but didn't apply for CAF specifically in that same following year. However, since that time, they have, for example, applied for some funding through the state and some other mechanisms and have been successful.
Okay.
So I anticipate maybe that that discussion will continue and you may see that shift into the green where there is hopefully a mechanism identified to support their continued process to getting that project rendered successfully.
And then Workland, for example, is with the university, so we would have some skin in the game in that, I guess.
Yeah, I would just defer to Alex to speak more to the Workland conversation.
Yes, sir. We've been talking with them. As a matter of fact, we had we've had some kind of project scoping meetings, you know, with the the developer that was chosen by or I believe is the name of the development company that was chosen by UVA, you know, for that project. And then we continue to be in discussion, you know, with them in terms of ADU requirements, in terms of who they need to talk to in the city. You know, whether it's Tom, what are NDS, permitting process, we've had that meeting with them and then refer them to appropriate city department for further consultations. So we are currently talking with them and we are expecting that they're going to submit application for funding request at the next round.
So just to confirm, so UVA had made a public pledge to build affordable housing. And in the context of them not paying over twenty million dollars annually in property taxes, our expectation is that they're going to come to us and request that we pay for building the affordable housing they pledged to build?
Well, I'm just, we are submitting the the information. This is what's going on right now. And that's a great question because it came up during the selection process and I happened to be on the UVA Housing Advisory Committee. And this was the question we dealt with, you know. This question is gonna come from the community, it's gonna come from the city council, you know. And so you guys be prepared in terms of how you are going to deal with that, you know. So that question is real. It's factual and you're not the only one that is asking this question. And yes, you know, we expect them to submit application. And then if they do, then staff will discuss that and the CAF Advisory Committee, you know, will also discuss that because I believe in one or two occasions, you know, it probably came up during their discussion, you know. So it's good that council is aware that this could happen. We have expectation that they will submit, but we'll wait until the next cycle and see what happens.
Yeah, I would say that my guess is that their view, not disagreeing with you, councillor Payne, but their view is that their contribution is the land underneath and the project management expertise to pull it off. So so that's that would be their view.
Well, all right. I I'll I'll say I think there's good news in this report. Granted, it's still a limited sample size, but that we've met our ten million, exceeded our ten million a year commitment every year is very positive as well as this past year that over sixty percent of funding went to thirty percent AMI or below. And ninety seven percent of funding went to fifty percent of area median income or below. I think is a very positive change in in direction in terms of what we're prioritizing in our funding. I have just a couple of questions, one on the preservation side. So we have a number of units created in some cases decades ago through low income housing tax credits. Those affordability periods will end at various points over the next few years. Do we kind of keep a list with each of those dates that the affordability period ends? So we can strategically look at a hundred affordable units will go on offline in three years. How can we proactively step in to ensure that doesn't happen?
Yeah, that's a great question. That's part of the track and, you know, process. Actually, we are looking at some kind of elaborate mechanism to do that, including, you know, the annual lists that comes out from the State Department of Housing and Community Development because they have and sometimes hard can send you a notice. You know, hey, folks, you know, the following is gonna be going off the affordability period, just in case if there is anything, any reaction that's gonna come back from the city in terms of in terms of negotiation for retention, you know. And the other thing is as we move forward at this at this point, since we already, we we have set up some kind of pipeline system for production. So one of the things we we are going to be putting in the agreement, you know, going forward, it's for the funded agency to notify the city ninety days before the expiration of the affordability period. So that the city will have enough time, reaction time in order to request for either extension, you know, and what have you. So we're going to build that in our agreement so that we have some kind of first right of refusal in terms of extension. And yes, yeah. We are doing that.
I just want to add, councillor Payne, I believe that maybe by mid September, I'll be able to speak to, because we're also, we're looking forward and we're also looking back. And then we have to track, to your point, when those expiration dates happen to really get a grasp on what our net net gain is and or 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 net loss, right? So based on what our activities right now and the information that we're aggregating as staff, I think by mid September, we'll be able to have a more detailed report of those prior li tech projects, for example, and where they sit and where they said to expire. And then that way you get a more comprehensive look at pipeline.
Right. And I and I guess my hope would be, I know going forward that we're gonna have a right of first refusal and other mechanisms, but obviously for some of those projects done in the eighties and nineties, they weren't done right and don't have that. So some of those we may need just awareness, one, two, three years in advance in order to kind of prepare and have it on our radar that, you know, hey, maybe part of our CIP, if we want to preserve two hundred units three years from now, just so we're aware of that, if it doesn't have a right of first refusal or this other.
And that's an interesting thing. You mentioned that number two hundred because right now, as we said, our net gain without counting those those expiration times or whatnot, we are at about two hundred units. So we'd like to be positive and at 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 the end of all this, right, we want to add to the portfolio. We don't kind of just want to break even.
Definitely. And the only other questions I assume for the projects that we have allocated funding for in our CIP that we're, you know, in our performance agreements, we're ensuring that our expectation of what the AMI levels are, the break, the percentage of units at different AMI levels that we're obviously keeping track of that and ensuring that that's being followed through on.
Yes, the slide before this one, where shows the pie charts, where reporting has improved because that's also been a part of the staff capacity and enhancing our activities or the outcomes of our activities. Where now we have more complete reports where they are reporting that data and we can measure our investments in terms of units created across AMI. So that reporting will only improve as our ability to collect information improves. We're we're okay with the outcome right now, but we can obviously do better. And so I I look to be able even probably in September to speak better to what that what that number is.
Yeah, and just final thoughts, nothing new, but I continue to think if we could have a land bank combined with a land trust, it could be another tool for preserving affordable housing, not just li tech, but also mobile home parks, kind of naturally occurring affordable housing. I also hope that we can be explicit that whenever those affordable housing contributions that have come through, particularly for some of these large student apartment complexes, that whenever we receive that money, that our expectation is that is on top of our ten million annual commitment, not a replacement for it. Otherwise, essentially, we've haven't really had a net contribution to affordable housing. And then again, nothing new, but those those AMI levels are striking in that when you're talking about thirty percent area median income, you're talking about people who are working full time, forty hours a week for fifteen dollars an hour. Fifty percent of AMI, you're talking about teachers, nurses, firefighters, city employees. And the planning district commission report showed the data that the the median black household in Charlottesville is at fifty percent of AMI. The median white household is more than double that. And so I think it's just important for us to always keep in mind in these conversations about anything housing relating related, who is completely left out from benefiting of some of our conversations. So I know you are all aware of that, but it's just, you know, striking to see every time.
All great points, and we continue to carry those forward as the committees meet, it comes up regularly in question and as they evaluate applications. As we consider new programs from the land bank to a payment for performance for affordable housing. There are a number of models that are that are being implemented across the state that has been put on our radar to evaluate. And so we do that through that lens, you know, so it's always good to hear.
Michael, what was it? I'm sorry, I was trying to multitask, which gets harder and harder the older I get. But the, you mentioned something about money replacing, not letting the fact that we get certain funds from somewhere else replace.
Well, my view is, for example, just to, let's say, one of these large student apartment complexes, their payment in lieu was ten million. I think that should be on top of our existing commitment, not just replace the ten million.
That makes sense. Yeah, thank you.
So Natalie, did you have any questions or comments at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lloyd, do you? Thank you.
Actually, I do have one comment, and that is looking at the page that called strategic funding allocations for affordable housing. I understand, I I'm assuming that the reason for this confusion is because you're going March to March.
Yes.
But anytime you talk about FY twenty twenty three, that really ought to be something that ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
That's correct.
That's not what that page shows. That page is a hopeless muddle if we're trying to figure out what we're actually doing in our fiscal year. Because you're crossing fiscal years and you're at, and I know you said it's actually three and a half years being figured in there. I just think as a matter of of convention, anytime we say FY twenty twenty three, we ought to be talking July to June, July of twenty twenty two to June of twenty twenty three. Similarly, FY twenty twenty two, similarly FY twenty twenty one.
It's not meant to be a muddle, but is to explain why the rest of twenty twenty four is not reported. Because we stopped at March to get the numbers currently where they are.
So that as as I'm just looking at this page, the numbers on the left don't match the numbers on the right. They're different years. The numbers actually match, but one of them says FY twenty twenty one, meaning what ends in March of FY twenty twenty two.
So let's count that a typo because you, I see what you're saying underneath. I wish I could go back for the rest of the public benefit. So underneath the bar chart where it says March FY twenty four. So conventionally, if I was doing this according to our fiscal years, it would go from the July, June dates, correct? Okay, but we were picking this conversation up from the endorsement of the Affordable Housing Plan, which occurred in March. So it does capture some of the twenty three, twenty four numbers, but there's a cutoff for us for this conversation. I think it added more confusion than it did clarity. So but to your point, it is heard and understood. It would not have read, it should not be there, March twenty three, twenty four. It should just say, just as the left says, FY twenty three, FY twenty two, FY twenty one for consistency. But I understand your point.
The 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 other question I have is is not really the I I'm trying to understand what it is that went into sixty one million dollars when we have always been thinking of ourselves as getting roughly ten, twelve million dollars in a fiscal year, which ought to translate to thirty to thirty six million. And here we are at sixty one million. And I certainly don't remember, I mean, I know we didn't, I know we didn't spend that money.
So that sixty one million also counts in your win column, the twenty three million dollar bond, a conversation that was discussed with Midway Manor. So if you were to take that out of that middle bar chart, that that would go down, right? Because that figures in there. But again, if you were to average this out over the applicable fiscal years, you wouldn't be at thirty plus million. It'd be actually closer to fifteen, sixteen million dollars.
Okay, I and my my reason for raising the issue may be as much for the benefit of of people who are trying to assess political promises, which I know isn't your job. But when we have made political promises that we're going to spend ten million dollars a year, my fear is that we look at something like this and say, boy, aren't we great? We more than doubled what we said we were gonna do, when in fact we didn't. And it's just a matter of of us trying to understand how we have used the ten million dollar commitment figure and how what's on this page isn't really, it's not really an apples to apples comparison. It's not your fault. It's a comment I'm directing more to the rest of us than you.
Okay, any other comments? Lloyd, or is you just kind of want that as a clarification?
Yeah, I got nothing else. So if I could, let me just also say that, take the point for for what it has been shared. And I think what we can do is we can make the adjustment to clarify or to represent the information by fiscal year exclusively. Because the endorsement of the Affordable Housing Plan happened before a fiscal year was over. There were only three remaining months. So that would be why we were trying to capture it this way and timing when the last update occurred. But this can be repositioned to be more reflective of by calendar year so that for the public consumption, we're presenting exactly what each individual fiscal year has produced, which is thirty eight million. If my math is right, but I might have missed something else that you put in there. But I think we can do that and then reissue that so that you have it by fiscal year, by actual single fiscal year.
And the other piece of that may be that next year, maybe you do your report in July and you will do it after the close of the fiscal year. And then we don't have to worry about the issue.
It's going there too. And that way it'll be a fiscal year to fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Okay. Mayor, city manager, councillors, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to report back to you on the community outreach efforts that you requested the last time I presented this to you. Before I get into this presentation, I just want to personally thank each of you for your time, for listening to me and all your thoughtful questions that we spoke last week. I really appreciate it. While I realize that there are folks who remain skeptical of this technology, I am reminded regularly of my responsibility as your chief to recommend to you data driven and proven strategies to address gun violence in our community. On the day I was sworn in right here, I identified three priorities that we'd begin to work on immediately. I committed one to building meaningful community partnerships and to addressing gun violence. Two, I committed to focusing on recruitment and retention. And then finally, I committed to the treatment and wellness of our staff. As a result, we have gone from thirty vacancies to three. We have invested in training of our entire staff on procedural justice principles, de-escalation and use of force principles utilizing the ICAP model. We have created a culture within our organization where the community and police work in concert to address complex issues facing our neighborhoods. And today I'm presenting you just one more piece, one tool of my promise to address gun violence within the city of Charlottesville. I'm also joined by members of our community action team who are here tonight. They're here because I've committed to report quarterly to them and to show them how we're using this technology and what circumstances we're using it in. Our community action team meets once a month to discuss important issues in the community, policy, and most importantly, to challenge me on the important topics of the of the day. I can assure you, none of them shy away from telling me what they really feel. I've also asked the executive director of the PCOB Gonzalez to be here as she will have unfettered access to the FLOC system and will be able to randomly audit our officers' activity within the system as she sees fit, just as she can with our body worn camera system. Recently, Ms. Gonzalez attended CEGIS training, Criminal Justice Information Security Training, which allows her to have access to information from NCIC and VSIN. Finally, and just because recently I just got off the phone with him not too long ago, I spoken with local attorney Jeff Fogel on several occasions about the FLOC system. And while he clearly opposes, he's not shy to tell you that. I value his opinion and his thought processes on the matter. He's been doing this work his entire life. My many conversations and regular meetings with him have formed my policy recommendations, which you'll hear from here in a second. If I can figure out how to work this thing. Okay, so FLOC, this is where currently in the Commonwealth of Virginia, FLOC exists. It's a ALPR, automated license plate readers. We talked about this the first time, so I won't belabor some of these points that we've already talked about. Within the Commonwealth, I just added a few of the jurisdictions, like size, like demographic jurisdictions, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Harrisonburg, Fairfax, Alexandria, Lynchburg, Richmond, Newport News, and I can go on. As I speak to my peers across the Commonwealth, they have seen dramatic reductions, significant reductions in either homicide, violent crime, and continue to to share stories of of those reductions in crime. So what are some of the benefits? And this is a slide from the last one, so I won't go through it, but all of it. But, you know, Amber Alert, Silver Alert, Blue Alert, when those alerts occur, our officers will be alerted immediately and will be either able to find that missing person, find that missing endangered adult, find that missing child. It's also a valuable tool for solving shootings, robberies and stolen vehicles. How can FLOC help mitigate disparities in policing? One, it allows a focus on objective data rather than subjective factors, which can reduce the potential for implicit bias in policing decisions. Now, look, there's no debate, none whatsoever, about the disparities in traffic stops, use of force and arrests. Anyone that says they don't exist is just lying to themselves. The question that we all need to be asking is why do they exist? The Center for Policing Equity is currently working with us on a study to study just that. And we have also partnered with the Justice Department on doing an organizational assessment to kind of see what our policies and practices are. I want to know the why. Why do they exist? I read report after report from jurisdiction after jurisdiction. It all says the same thing. Again, typically, when we are looking for someone, looking for a vehicle, we cast a wide net. This system will allow us to focus. This system will allow us to focus. Uh, when I met, when we did meet during our two to ones, Miss Ostrin, you had a very good question and made a very good point about the sub objective and subjective factors. And to your point, you know, we're never going to be able to completely get rid of our the subjectivity of traffic stops. Uh, but this is one piece, one tool that can help us do a little better. And I've been very clear that we need to continue to do better. So what is FLOC safety? FLOC safety deploys solo license plate readers. They take a picture. It's a photograph. It is not a video. Provides still images of vehicles and their respective uh the license plate numbers. And then the or the or a uh or the the rear of the vehicle. It's a web-based program with unlimited end users that can also search for make, model of vehicles as well as color and body types. And it downloads NCIC hot lists four times a day. It does not, and I'll repeat this, it does not access the DMV system. It is the NCIC system. So if your vehicle is not registered or expired, it doesn't access it like that. It only accesses the NCI system, NCIC system.
Which is what, sir?
National Criminal Information uh Center, that's it, yes. It's a it's it's maintained by the FBI, and it's basically if you have a missing person, uh, there's specific parameters in order to enter something or someone into that uh system. That the CEGIS training that you have to go through for security, I was just talking about that Ms. Gonzalez has in order to have access to this system or to view any of it, you have to have attended that training. What is not FLOC safety? It's not a video, does not have facial recognition, and it does not report traffic violations. These are three things that I've heard misconceptions of what it is. It doesn't do any of these.
Sorry, when you say does not report traffic violations, that means it's not a red light camera?
It is not. Um, so I'm going to get into calls for service, just some raw data, what we see here in the city. Um, so if you see on the left district, so we have separated the city into three districts, north, central, and south. We've done that from an accountability piece. Um, there is a commander assigned to each district. Every month when we have our community stat meeting, each district commander gets up in front and talks about things going on within their district and what they're doing about it. Um, and um, you know, Councilor Snook, you've been to one, the city manager as well. It's a it's a long meeting. Um, anyone is welcome to attend. Any of y'all are welcome to attend. Um, but uh, it was a lot of good information comes that from that. As you can see, we continue to see a correlation between our stolen vehicles and our shots fired calls within the city.
Sorry, can you tell us say what those acronyms on the left are?
Yes. So Charlottesville Police North, Charlottesville Police Central, Charlottesville Police South.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, as you can, here's a heat map of our stolen vehicles for twenty twenty three. A mark, a majority of our stolen vehicles are being reported in the downtown west, main and uh tenth and Grady uh areas of the city.
Where are people stealing these cars from?
Parking lots, side of the road, driveways.
And they they do that sort of their um vehicle of choice to commit?
That's correct. So what we're seeing is group of folks pull up in a car, someone's car, someone who owns it. One of the persons will get out, they'll steal the car. They'll go commit the crime, the shooting, whatever. Typically, it's a shooting. And then they'll dump that car. The LPR system will assist us in identifying that car that dropped them off. It'll give us a name. It'll also be able to track the area of that vehicle from an evidentiary purpose if there's a homicide associated with that shooting. Here are shots fired heat map. You can see it's the same areas.
Can I, sorry, can I back up quickly? How many of those stolen cars are recovered?
Oh, I don't have that number in front of me right now, but but we do recover a lot of those.
Thanks.
You could see the the heat map for our uh shots fired calls for twenty twenty three, same areas. And this is the combined shots fired in stolen vehicle. They're happening in the same area. Eighty five percent of our shootings involve the use of vehicles. And so if a description of a vehicle with no tag information is put out, I'll use the example of the Elliewood murder that happened last year. We had a description early on of a silver four-door sedan that the suspects just got into. That description was given to dispatch immediately after that person was killed in a parking lot at around one o'clock in the morning. If we had the FLOC uh ALPR system, it would have, we would have been able to put that information immediately into that system and any silver four-door sedan that would have driven through one of the FLOC systems would have alerted responding officers. They could have gone locate, tried to locate that vehicle. They have to come up with their own reason to stop it. And I'll get into uh what officers can and can't do from a FLOC hit. But uh it would have given us a lead and and hopefully would have been able to apprehend that person much sooner. All six murders in twenty twenty three involved a vehicle. These are the locations that we are proposing to put the cameras. We will be advertising this. These will be put out. It will not be a secret where the cameras are. Everyone will know where they are. You could see that they're not in specific neighborhoods. It's mostly entrance and exit routes from the city or made thorough main thoroughfares. So community outreach. Uh, Mayor, at the time you were a counselor, you had really requested that we get out and speak to the community. I appreciate that. Uh, because we we learned a lot. I learned a lot. Uh, this is a list of the different uh organizations that we went and spoke to and the different conversations we had. Tenth Page Association, Venable, North Old Town, Friends of Downtown, Fifeville. Uh, Rose Hill is scheduled for April ninth, the specific for that organization. Uh, but I we have spoken to them, just haven't give the official presentation to them yet. Uh, conversations during our community walks. And let me say this about those walks. Um, you'll see that last one, Ridge and Langford Residents Association. We did a community walk after uh there was a shooting on that block. And that turned into a community meeting on a sidewalk with about twenty residents. And there to to say they were angry is an understatement. Stories of one woman who their kids are now have to, they're still dealing with what they saw, what happened, because they're out on their bikes when there was a shootout on their block involving two vehicles. Again, if we had this system, we would have been able to identify those vehicles quickly and hopefully take those folks into custody that were involved in this. Instead, what happened is there was retribution. And we I talked about this when this was happening over three or four days. We had like three shootings over four days. It was these groups shooting back and forth each other. And so it really impacts folks in the community. Um, our community action team, I've given the presentation to our community action team, gotten a lot of great questions. Um, they have helped me form my policy recommendations as well as we go through this. I've also given the presentation to the PCOB and then at town hall meeting that we conducted. Feedback. So I'll say this. The feedback that we have received while giving these presentations could overwhelmingly in support of it. I've been asked, why don't we have it yet? That being said, there were also some really um, there were some privacy concerns, significant privacy concerns, and I'm sensitive to them. And as a result of these conversations, you'll see my initial presentation, my initial recommendations, what I offered to you at first, and then what I'm offering to you now. So initial policy recommendations. Retention for data was thirty days, which is what every jurisdiction in the Commonwealth of Virginia does. And across the across the country, to be honest with you, and I'll show you some examples. There's a few that are that are much less, but for the most part, the industry standard's thirty days. Um, the data is shared with all government FLOC us users across the nation. And it would be an initial three-year program. The cost of it is thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, so it would have been ninety thousand dollars. After my conversations, after my meetings with Mr. Fogel, after my meetings with the community action team, this is my current recommendation. A twelve-month pilot with quarterly updates to community groups. Every one of those groups, I have committed to meet with them quarterly to go over this data and what we're doing with it. To city council, I commit to you, city council, to come back to you quarterly and go over what we are doing with this data, what we are doing with these cameras. And to the PCOB, I commit to the PCOB to come to their meetings quarterly and present to them what they are doing with this. There's also, we're also going to have a transparency portable available to the public online, and I'll show you what what a few of them look like from other jurisdictions. Talks about how long we keep the data, who we're sharing it with, and what we're doing with it. I have also, I'm also recommending data will only be retained for seven days. This is the shortest retention within the Commonwealth of Virginia. Data will not be shared outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So in my policy recommendation, and you will see some examples because it shows who had access to their cameras. You'll notice there some jurisdictions have a lot of places that have access to their cameras. No one outside of Commonwealth of Virginia, no FLOC user outside of Commonwealth of Virginia will have access to our cameras. And then this this notice, and I I actually got this from the uh the ACLU's website. I think it's a, I actually think it's a good practice. Um, a notice to any officer who gets a FLOC hit. A FLOC alert, it will say a FLOC alert is not justification on its own to justify a stop of the vehicle. Information from the alert must be independently confirmed by the officer before acting upon its information. Here are some accountability measures. I've talked about a few of them in my uh in my opening statement. But the system will have a system administrator in the police department. They'll conduct regular audits to ensure pro- uh proper usage of the system. If an officer is found to use this for something other than a criminal justice, a legitimate law enforcement purpose, that is a crime within the Commonwealth of Virginia. It is a class one misdemeanor. I have spoken to the Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Potania, and the officer will be prosecuted. Make no mistake about it. It's a crime. Executive Director of the PCOB has been asked to have full audit capability of it. What does that mean? What does that look like? And Inez is here today, and she could ask any fa- answer any follow-ups. And we've spoken about this. It is the auditing of the officer's activity within the system, just like anything else that she would have the ability to audit. So she could go in and audit one officer a day, fifteen officers the next day. It depends on what she has time to do and the ability to do it. When an officer goes in and runs a query in the FLOC system, they it's a stamp says why they're running it, who's running it, when they ran it. Uh, if a complaint comes in about a traffic stop, and that traffic stop was a result of a uh FLOC hit, obviously, Ms. Gonzalez would be investigating that or looking into that, especially if the complaint came into the PCOB. So she needs full access to this system in order to do her job, and she will have it. Um, and again, I I I talked about the violations. I I can't stress that enough. Fact that misuse of this is a crime and the persons will be held accountable. Data security, um, all the data that's captured is stored for a brief period of time on a local device and is quickly moved to a FLOC server um and encrypted um and then on. Um, it does not, FLOC does not party with uh does not partner with any third party, so everything in the system stays within the system. And it's fully au- uh audible. These are a few of the transparency portals. You can see, this is Warwick, Rhode Island. Um, you can see how many days they keep it. It says up there on the far right. This one's thirty days. Who has access to their system? Um, I tried looking for uh California, Governor, Governor Newsom just uh the other day, I think two days ago announced they purchased four hundred and eighty FLOC cameras uh for California highways. And I'm I'm curious to look at their transparency portal. Um, this is San Diego, California's. Again, they keep it for thirty days. Um, and and it and it's longer. This is just kind of the clip art, couldn't get all of it on there, but um you can go on and look at, you just Google transparency portal FLOC for any jurisdiction that has it, and it's all out there. Uh, and this is Virginia. As you can see, this is Culpeper, Virginia, where it says who they share it with, and it goes much longer. So you can see uh who we are, who has access to our cameras.
Now, what does it mean to have access to your cameras?
Good question, sir. So um basically, anybody, anybody who has FLOC, so say uh California, they have four hundred and eighty FLOC cameras. Uh, California, if I allowed to have access to outside the Commonwealth of Virginia, they would be able to access our system. So if they're looking for a um, they're looking for a a murder suspect, and they have a vehicle associated with that, they could go in and view all uh FLOCs within the country and say, hey, does this tag? If it's gone through that camera, they would know and be able to lo- alert the local jurisdiction. Um, that that that's what it means. They have access to.
But I I mean, it would seem the the easiest way to think of it is, and tell me if this is correct, is somebody types in license plate XYZ fourth, five, six, seven.
Yep.
And then somehow hits would come back saying, oh, that vehicle was seen in Des Moines, Iowa.
That's correct.
Um, i- is it that specific where you're querying it for a particular license plate or a particular description of a vehicle or?
Either or.
What kind of a query goes?
You could do either. You could do a description. Obviously, a description is not going to give you much other, I mean.
Give you too much.
Right, give you too much information, doesn't do you much help. Um, but it's uh, but yeah, it, you can also see if somebody queries our FLOC system, the same as our officers querying it, has the name of the person querying it, the jurisdiction, and why they're doing it. And so we would be alerted. So we're going to block it off. Nobody from outside of Commonwealth will be able to query our system. But let's just say Newport News is looking for, you know, queries our our system, looking for someone they might know um, just committed a a violent offense or offense that would qualify to be entered in NCIC, right? Um, they would be able to query our system, but they would be, we would know that they queried the system.
An out-of-state officer who was investigating and wanted access to Charlottesville's data could just call up Charlottesville PD and say, hey, can you check for me?
They could, but I'm committing to you that we're not doing that.
Okay.
From the outside, outside of the Commonwealth. Which may not make me very popular or someone.
Well, I mean, yeah, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes. And and this is summary. I think I've kind of hit on all of these and the jurisdictions that are that are using it and the successes that they've had. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions at all. Uh, I just also, let me just say one thing, this about technology in general. Um, I got into policing twenty five years ago, and cell phones didn't exist. Now, I'm not the old guy in the room, because I know I'm not. But um.
Careful.
But they didn't. And you know, technology has done a lot. We all have them in our in our pockets right now. Uh, there's cameras everywhere. You'll notice none of these FLOC cameras are in specific neighborhoods. You know why? Because there's already enough cameras in those neighborhoods. You're not going to walk through a neighborhood in this city without being on video. That's just a fact. Do I like it? No, I don't think any of us really like it, but that's where we are. And so I say all that to say that this is a tool. This is one tool. This isn't a silver, this isn't the silver bullet. This isn't like, this isn't gonna uh solve everything. But it is a data-driven approach that is shown to be effective in other jurisdictions that have used it. There's a reason why California just purchased four hundred and eighty of them. Okay, the it's it's it, it's been shown to work. But I will also say this that we have focused within our police department, not only on technology, but also on people. We bring it, we've, we have invested significantly on bringing in trainers and courses and programs within our organization to teach a class on empathy. Right? There's no app that'll teach you about empathy, right? It's it's just doesn't exist. I don't think that everyone. So we're doing all the above. It's yes and. That's that I I wanted to kind of get that across because it's not just about technology. We have a lot of it. I know Major Nick back there, he messes with me all the time about technology. I still ask for a three-ring binder with paper in. Right? But um, I, yeah, it's so so we're doing it all. We're not just relying on technology. Our body worn cameras are on all the time. You hit it, you turn it on, it goes back thirty seconds, so it's recording all the time. Um, you know, it's out there, and uh it's important that we use it responsibly and that we are transparent about what we're using it for and that we answer for it. With that, I'll ask any questions.
Okay. So um, so I think that what I'd like to do, um, we we're not going to vote on, this is not something we vote on because it's a it's in the pilot stage, but I, we would like to get comments from each um person, or if you'd like to speak um um, to see if there is a majority of us that will be in support of the city of Charlottesville using this technology. So um, if we could just, you can, we can just go around and kind of give you thoughts and your questions or input. And ultimately, just kind of, you know, if you feel like you're ready to give guidance on it, so.
Yeah, I'll be interested to hear what my other counselors have to say, but sort of where I stand right now is um, I'm willing to give it a year-long pilot. I'd I'd like some assurances that it like we have to has to be formally renewed somehow before we it goes forward. And I I think one of the things I appreciate about what I've seen tonight and the conversations we've had is that you've you've clearly gone out and talked to people and you've adjusted your recommendations accordingly. Um, I think all of us worry about the amount of surveillance and technology that that we're under. Um, but I I also think it's just sort of the state of. But I also think it's just sort of the state of things. Question for you, so my, my son was living in DC and he got to know the traffic cameras there pretty well.
I think we all have it. None of us are perfect.
Yeah, those, we don't have that in this city now, obviously. But is what you're proposing sort of the same kind of technology? I mean, it seems to me if I were living in a place like DC, in other words, what, what's being proposed here seems less invasive than what is in DC.
It, it is. I will say that what, what you're, there are jurisdictions in Virginia that have speed cameras. They, but they can only use them in school zones and, and work zones, I believe. And so that is different because you get a ticket in the mail and it's for traffic infractions.
Right.
This is not for that.
But in other words, it seems more onerous or big brotherish, I guess, what's in DC than what would be proposed here.
Yeah, and it's more costly because you'd have to hire an officer to manage the program because by code, an officer has to actually send the ticket to people, has to be a sworn officer.
In Virginia?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense from a privacy perspective.
Yeah, it is different.
Yeah, and then body worn cameras, so that is, that's also a place in which people are being recorded whether they want to be or not during traffic stops, correct?
That's correct.
So it's not like there's not precedent in our community of some sort. And this doesn't seem as invasive as a place like DC in terms of all their, their cameras, so.
And I could talk about technology, about body worn cameras, just, you know, I mean, it's, the technology's out there, so there's nothing secret about it. I could sit in my office and turn on an officer's body worn camera and view what he's doing live on the street.
Yeah, that's good for accountability, I would think. Yeah, so I, I have concerns about this, but I think that, you know, we hired you to help us solve crime and to do the things that you feel like professionally make the most sense for our city. I know that there's no panacea, but I think that this could be a good tool. So I support it. Subject to the, the qualifications that you laid out. I'm especially grateful that we have the PCOB. I think this is another good example of why having a PCOB is a good thing for us.
So. Questions for the PCOB executive director, I'm curious to kind of hear your thoughts about how you would perceive auditing this, monitoring, working in practice? And does the capacity exist to do that? Because it's just so much data. I'm wondering how that would work in practice.
And that seems to be the question that I'm getting that's of most concern to the community. So that the people understand I do not have the capability to audit every single solitary car that goes through the flock system. It's impossible that even the police department has the manpower to do that. The only thing that I could commit to from the PCOB's perspective is to random audits. And that would mean, you know, given that there's no other priority in investigation or complaint that I'm looking at, then yes, I have, will theoretically have the ability to go into the system and audit. As the chief explained, I can do one or two officers, I could do as many officers as whatever it is I have time to do on that particular day. But it's only the interaction with the officer and the technology and not the technology itself. So it'll be limited to just a very small number in terms of the grand scheme of things where all, all, you know, you're going to talk about, I'm guessing thousands of vehicles that are going to be going through the flock system on any given day.
And I guess from, from your perspective in the role that you're in, do you have any kind of thoughts, concerns or remaining questions about the system or experiences you've seen in other localities in terms of how they've?
So sadly, I am the old person in the room. In terms, at least from the police, yeah, from the policing perspective. So I haven't dealt with spot flock specifically. I have not been trained in the use of flock. I haven't interacted with the people from flock, so I don't know a whole lot about it at this point. Based on the systems that we've used in the past. Again, the system itself has the ability to audit itself. I know there is a tracking mechanism, but again, if we're going to only deal with retention for a seven day period, for example, I'm limited to, to that seven day period. So I'd have to actually try to schedule something every seven days. Again, the sheer volume makes it impossible for us to, to go through every single solitary interaction. That I don't have the ability to do. The only other issue obviously is, is from the perspective of information sharing, which I think the chief has addressed. If we're not going to be sharing information, you know, again, that's the greatest concern that I've heard from the community is whether or not the information from, from the flock system is going to be shared, sold and how much of a privacy issue it is in terms of their, their personal information.
I've got some additional questions on that front. I had a note about capacity as well. But following up on some of the things you just mentioned. Are you going to, I assume you would, if this were to proceed, you would get training on all of those.
That would have to, that's absolutely necessary. Again, I have no experience whatsoever with flock.
Yeah, so, and, and towards the end, I know the city manager was going to ask me a question, but I'll, I'll get right into it. Next, kind of next steps. We would be obviously developing our policy first and then department-wide training, which Inez would be involved in as well. The first step for Inez has already been done with the CGIS training so that you can access to certain things. But yeah, we're probably, depending on where we go today, we're probably looking probably about four months before something gets rolled out. And then there'll be a communication strategy in order to make sure the community knows, okay, these are up. They're now active. This is where they are and all of that. So it's a process, but absolutely Inez would be part of that train.
And we also had a discussion in terms of the policy itself. Once the policy is created in draft version, which there is one already, but once it's revised, we're going to be looking at the policy itself to see if there's any questions that come up that would be a concern to the police of the oversight board.
And you mentioned a couple of seconds ago that the system can audit itself. What do you mean by that?
Well, in other words, there's a tracking mechanism. So there's no activity that can be taken in the system. Same thing applies to NCIC, SEIC, all of those systems. There's a way to actually pull up a report that will show you exactly who's using it, when they're using, what were they using it for? So you can actually produce an actual report. I'm assuming if flock is anything like the old systems, you'll be able to do that as well. So within, let's say that seven day retention period, if he assigns someone from his department to actually print up a report of all activity that flock is engaged in, he'll be able to produce that type of report.
So it doesn't have red flags on itself?
No, no red flags.
But it just has logs that track.
Which is important because if there's an issue down the line, let's just say there's an investigation, someone comes to me, not within that seven day period. If that information is already lost, then it makes it very difficult for me to go back and try to backtrack, so.
Right, the, the timeline I'm not as concerned by, I just wondered what you meant by self audit. It's really not a self audit. It's the ability to pull a report.
Right, in, in other words, it's, it's a tracking mechanism. So I misspoke. It's actually a tracking mechanism of all activity that's engaged in the system.
Okay, thanks. And do you know how I, you know, this is part of the policy building, I guess, but it would be interesting to hear how he would present those audits. What, what is your theory of how you would look at, what, what would you be looking for? How would you do it? And then how would you present that to the chief and?
Well, for one, it would be to ensure that the, that no particular officer is going into the system utilizing it for an unauthorized purpose. If we're looking at the system, say, for example, to track the activity of a particular individual, for example, that doesn't have, that's not associated directly with one of the crimes that it was entered into the NCIC, NCIC system for. So, and again, this is all theoretical because I don't know how it works.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for Ms. Gonzalez. Does anyone have other questions for, because I've got more for the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in terms of presenting information, as you just kind of touched on, you had presented the, the heat map of the shootings and the car thefts. But then when you presented the list of where the proposed locations are for the cameras, it was just a list of them. I think it would be helpful to have that on a map as well. So it just is presenting the information in a comparable way.
So that's a, it's a great point. We actually had that, but it was like really confusing. But what we can do is when we do our community outreach, our communications, that we're going to do it, we'll do that.
Okay, that, that would have been helpful.
Thank you.
Because I, I know the names of all of those places, but where they are is.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Can the cap, cameras capture people walking or biking or faces? Or is it somehow, how does it work to only capture license plates?
So the cameras are actually installed in a way primarily to catch the rear of the vehicle. That's what they're still in. Major Nick, you're here, so you could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure, I think I'm saying this correctly. It, to capture the rear of a vehicle. Now, if it's capturing the rear of a vehicle and somebody's riding a bike, theoretically, I think, could that happen? I, I'm not going to sit here and lie to you and say it can't because I, I don't know. But I'm assuming if it's next to the car that's taking a picture, it could. But I have not seen or heard of that.
So the technical, the system knows how to recognize what is a vehicle, what is not. So any pedestrian bicycle, things of that nature that doesn't meet the characteristics that the AI system of the camera is using to determine, okay, that is a motorcycle or a car, it will not capture that recorded. It does take front pictures of a vehicle. And this is one of those things that we're going to have to wait till we get the system. It all depends on how the camera is set up, the specifics geographic, I guess, area of the camera. But for the most part, they do try to focus on the rear of the vehicle just because there are several states out here that do not have front license plates. They just put license plates on the rear. But there are situations at which it could be a front capture.
And so just to follow up on that, you said it all depends on how it's set up.
Yes.
So if that hasn't been determined yet, how have the locations been chosen?
We've worked with traffic engineering to determine what are some of the most traveled areas in the city. Obviously with only doing ten cameras, we can't put it on every major thoroughfare on this city. So we're more looking at kind of the, I guess, the exterior outer perimeter of the city as far as determining locations. What I mean by setup, there's different variations. In some cases, it might be a standalone pole that flock would come in and install the camera at one. Or it could be existing city poles or structuring that the camera would be placed on. And that can depend on the actual height that the camera is mounted, the, the angle towards the area that it's trying to capture. Is it two lanes, four lanes or one lane that the camera is capturing? There's a lot of different variables that we just don't know exactly how that image is going to appear until.
So the locations were based off traffic, not necessarily on existing infrastructure?
Yeah, no, we looked at traffic. We looked, if we're trying to figure out a way to get a good idea of, you know, those that might be committing a crime and fleeing the city. What are the more areas that were traveled, the most likely route for them trying to leave the city? Or to that, a stolen vehicle coming in or out or a amber alert coming in and out. So we did, we looked at the major thoroughfares. I know in our original study, there was twenty-six locations that flock said is probably good, but we're not, we're not trying to go down that road.
The, something to clarify, thank you. Something to clarify, you mentioned that all of the, or a lot of the shootings and all of the murders were, involved a car.
They were, they, it involved a car one way or another, yes.
And what are some of those ways?
I'll give you an example. The murder that occurred on Ellie Wood Drive. The person, the, the person was murdered in a parking lot and a suspect jumped into a yellow, I'm sorry, a silver four door sedan and fled. Involved the vehicle as a getaway vehicle. The murder that occurred on, on Hardy Drive. The, the vehicle had pulled up to meet with somebody. A person walked up to the vehicle and shot and killed the person inside of the vehicle. So just different, the murder that occurred somewhere around this time last year, actually probably in March of last year. A person was killed inside of a vehicle while they were parked, but the car was driving around prior with the person. So it would have been able to track. So those are just three examples.
Okay, thanks. What will trigger the review of footage? You mentioned that an alert alone is not enough. There must be an independent review by an officer. What is, what does that mean? What, like, what is the actual?
Yes, I'll give you an example. So if a stolen vehicle, a tag goes through one of the flock cameras, an alert goes out to the officers who are working. This, this vehicle just went through this camera. It's a, a blue four door sedan. The officer can get in the area and try to locate that blue four door sedan, but can't pull them over just based on that alert. They have to get behind it, run the tag themselves, confirm that it is in fact that stolen vehicle and then stop it. That's what it means.
Okay. So is there, I'm not familiar with all of the specific steps of how police jobs work. But is there a point where there would need to be a warrant process to proceed with some kind of?
No.
Next step?
No, you're, because you're, the, the photograph of your license plate, like you'll be walking down the street, someone can take a picture of your license plate. It's, it's for public view. So there's no expectation of privacy for the photo of your vehicle.
But then to proceed with whatever you do next?
Well, it would, it would depend. It would, it would just depend on the case, circumstances, a lot of things around it, so.
Okay. What officers would have access to the system?
All sworn officers.
All sworn officers?
Correct.
Okay, how many is that? Like one?
One hundred and nine.
Nine, one.
Depend, it depends what you guys do with the budget maybe.
Right. And have the city attorney's office reviewed the contract in fine print for all of this?
So I don't, we haven't, I'd need to hear from you all first before we keep moving further, but they will.
Okay. There have been some cases of video or database error that have led to wrongful detentions and arrests from information gleaned from the flock system. If the, so we know that the, the police association is covering the costs of the pilot.
Police Foundation.
Police Foundation, pardon me. If the police do something wrong based on data collected from the flock system and there needs to be a court settlement or court fees, will the police foundation cover those costs as well? Or would that be something the city would be forced to put the bill for?
So I'm going to try to unpack your question. So first, the, I don't know what cases you're talking about, about specific cases involving wrongful detention.
Yeah, there's been some cases where the license plate reads a seven instead of a three. And so the car gets pulled over, the occupants are held at gunpoint, they sue for wrongful detention. And then the city owes a payout.
So the question you had prior to this is the exact reason why we have that verbiage. So an officer cannot just pull a car over based on a flock hit. They have to get behind that vehicle, come up with what's called your own reasonable articulable suspicion to pull the vehicle over to prevent just that. If that doesn't happen, then I would say that officer is liable and therefore the city would be liable. But that would happen if we didn't have flock and an officer were to do something. I mean, there's, there's, there's lots of scenarios where an officer could be held liable or the city could be held liable, whether it be a flock hit or not.
Okay. If, so the, the foundation is funding the pilot program. Is the theory at the end of the pilot program, the city then steps forward to continue funding? Or would the foundation continue funding? And if so, for how long?
Well, I think that has to be a conversation when we get to that point. I have to stand in front of you all and say, we're either going to continue it or not after a year and, and go from there.
Okay, and a lot of the, the the metrics are hard to determine, right? We don't know the crimes that weren't committed. So as in our conversations before, you've said it's hard to tell if this has actually been part of the crime reduction process. I mean, we know everything from housing security to a reduced quantity of lead in the air has led to crime reductions.
Absolutely.
So for the, the data that you're looking at from other localities, you've alluded to it. But what is, how are you going to present that data to us? What are you looking at from those other localities? And is there any actual concrete data for?
So how, how do you measure success when it comes to reduction in crime? Right? And so I've said this to you all, as your chief would love to stand up here and, and say, great, we've had a reduction in part one crime in 2023. It's all because of the police. That's, I can't say that because there's so much that goes into addressing specifically violent crime in, in the community. When, especially when you start talking about the root causes of violent crime. Housing, you made a perfect example. You know, we were talking about it earlier and the city manager and I have talked about this before as well. You know, addressing the housing, housing issues, that's, that's a, that is a way to reduce crime in a community. And so, but this, I believe this is as well. I think it's a yes and. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's all the above approach. So just to say one specific thing, I don't think that's fair. I will say that jurisdictions that have implemented this, since they've implemented, have seen a reduction in, in violent crime. Is it fair to say that's the only reason they've seen a reduction in violent crime? I don't know what they're doing in their communities. I would suspect it's not, but it's a piece, it's a piece of it.
Okay. Cause I, I I've made this point before to you and to some other people in this room, but I'll, I'll repeat it for everyone else. Enforcement occurs after a crime is already. I'll, I'll repeat it for everyone else. Um, enforcement occurs after a crime has already been committed, so it's still reactive. Um, and for all of these crimes that you're discussing here involving cars, the best way to reduce car violence is to reduce cars. That's a point that I'm always gonna stand by. Um.
And I think to you, I will, I will say this, ma'am, the, the. The example I gave of what happened up our Ridge Street in Langford about the shooting that happened there. Um, if we could get ahead of that sooner, we don't have to worry about the retaliation retaliation of that shooting. So that would be a way that we could reduce it before that second shooting happened.
Um. I've got a a longer list I'm kind of calling from if anyone else wants to jump in while I.
I'd be more than willing to meet with you uh when I want to answer any of your questions.
So, and I just have um, just a couple more questions.
Sure.
Um, so in the the policy, are there going to be? Permissible uses in which this data could be pooled? I know it couldn't be used for immigration enforcement, traffic violations. But it would be, would it be limited to like amber alerts, violent crimes, vehicle thefts, or could it be used as part of any criminal investigation?
We would lay that out in our policy, exactly what what it could be used for.
Hmm, um. And then a a few other questions some members of the community had, um.
And I'm sorry, real quick too, it'll, and not only will be in our policy, the transparency portal, if you look at those on there, it says what it can be used for and what it can't be used for. And we plan on doing the same.
All right, so I get, just try to understand it in my mind. So as a follow-up to that, like, would it be a permissible use for, say? Pool every vehicle at three A M. That was passing in this area when the volume. Could theoretically be low enough where you could kind of ascertain a lower number of vehicle make, models, license plates?
Well, I mean, so if we had a homicide involving a vehicle that was a green four-door at three o'clock in the morning. They could look for a green four-door that at three o'clock in the morning, I went through those cameras. Does that? I mean, we can't just, we're not, you have to have a legitimate reason to be searching for something.
Yeah, well, I, I guess, you know, uh, not being in neighborhoods, it's less of a concern, given that it's at those entry and exit ways to the city. But just kind of in in theory, if it would be uh permissible to particularly at a low volume time, just look at every vehicle that went through.
I, I, I would say that would be misuse. To just randomly look at every vehicle that went through a camera for no legitimate law enforcement purpose.
Hmm, um, and then just two other questions, um, uh. Have there been scientific studies to this point that have evaluated the effectiveness of the flock system and whether it reduces crime or not?
I don't, I don't know, and I suspect not. Um, I'm not, I don't know.
Sure. Um, and then the final question is, is there a reason for pursuing this system rather than uh like a shots fired system?
So we, so flock also does ShotSpotter. They have ShotSpot that you that you're talking about. So ShotSpotter is used in other jurisdictions. I think Portsmouth is using it now with the flock system. The the challenge in Charlottesville with ShotSpotter is it's hilly and the acoustics come. Uh, they're not, it's just wouldn't be effective. Um, we'd have a lot of missed uh reports, and so. Uh, so we, we did not make that recommendation.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Lloyd, um, what are your thoughts?
I don't, I don't really have any questions. I've uh looked into it a fair amount. Uh, through some legal sources as well as meeting with chief and others. Um, and I, I, I think that the, 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 the changes that you have recommended. The seven days, the, and the other restrictions, uh, and the fact that we would be taking a look at it in a year are all very. Encouraging to me. Um, I think it has, it's a system that has potential both for. Uh, being useful and also for being abused. And one of the ways we would find out. Is to, is to look at it and to report on it and to account for it. Um. I've talked with a number of, I mean, I have to say, well, when my email has been burning up recently. One of the topics it's been burning up over is crime.
Hmm.
Um, and crime in neighborhoods that. Um, at least one of the neighborhoods would be a neighborhood that there would be, um. There'd be a flock camera basically right next to to where they're talking about. Uh, and. It's a, it's a neighborhood where there has been a significant increase in in other criminal activities, so. Uh, I, I can imagine in a case like that that it would be useful, and I can imagine, and I know from having heard from the residents. That they're anxious that basically. Anything that has a reasonable chance of of uh cutting down on criminal activity in their neighborhood and be used. Uh, that doesn't mean we automatically do whatever they want in that respect, but I think that the changes. That you've made to the policy and the fact that we can review it in a year, uh, may make it a good, a good way to approach it as a pilot program.
And sir, what I, what I will say is, um, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you quarterly.
Yeah.
For this, for next year.
Michael, I've got that. So Lloyd, it sounds like you would be supportive of the pilot. Michael, what are your thoughts? I'm not sure if I.
Sure, yeah. Um, and this is nothing I haven't shared over email or in conversation, um. But as I've said, I I do uh understand the motivation in terms of. Perhaps the most critical activity is solving a murder and making sure that family has justice. Um, and I also understand that this is just one tool to do so that doesn't uh. Necessarily need to involve a direct confrontation between an officer and a suspect and provides a little bit more. Um, of an objective data source, and I completely understand that, and I'm also guessing there's. Right, quite a few people around the state who are wondering what in the world you've done, and then, and then, and that. As my understanding, you could have just signed off on this, and the city doesn't need to provide funding immediately. So it could have just been done, but I think this was the exact correct process. To go to the community, to bring this to council, to have a public conversation about it. Um, um. I'll, I'll just say again, though, I mean, when it comes to state surveillance in in civil liberties, I mean, I'm just. A libertarian on that issue. That's just where I come from, and and my concern is not even. Just potential for local misuse, but the fact that it's part of a a private company maintaining a national baited database that. Um, is invested in Palin, vested in by Palin tier technologies, has a private surveillance system. And so the concern is not even just. What may be done locally, but how they may utilize that long-term within their national system and the other surveillance technologies they have in place. Understand, we already have stingrays. As you mentioned, we've got cameras everywhere. We've got Amazon Ring cameras, but. This is one thing we have a decision point over, and and particularly with, without seeing the the specific verbiage of the contract and the, and the policy. Um, I do get it, and I applaud that this deliberative process was done, but I just. In terms of what I believe, I just can't get myself there in terms of supporting it. I respect that. Thank you.
So, do you?
Okay, I just have a couple.
Okay, cuz we wanna, we, we don't have a closed session, but we, we did one, yeah.
Um, so for the presentation, uh, so you know, the pilot is going to be a. Like, I think of it like a science fair project. You have a theory, you have a protocol, you come up with metrics, what you're looking for. Does it meet those? Metrics or not, and then write your presentation at the end, and you know, what, what happened? Was there anything unexpected? You know, it's just like any other report. Um, so what metrics are you going to be looking for?
So, I think there's, there could be several. I mean, it's, I would say it's like a science project. I would, um. I would say that I would come back quarterly and report success stories. What are we, what are we using it for? Um, have we, you know, have we uh solved cases involving violent crime? And, and so I think there's lots of things that you can measure, uh, as we were just speaking about, you know. This isn't the only thing that's going to address crime in a city. It's much more complex than that. Again, this is just an investigative tool uh for our officers to use and for um. For us to help bring some closure to families that are experiencing this. Um, to, to know that when we have a shooting in someone's home and they call me or come show me. The bullet hole in their home plugged with tissue paper, so the breeze won't come in, that we have done everything in our power. And that we have done everything with our resources available to us. To help make them feel a little bit more comfortable, they're not, that they're not gonna come back, and that we've been able to hold that person accountable. So. Um, I don't have, I know it's not a direct answer to your question, um, but I will do, I will report back to you, not just. At the end of the one-year pilot, but I'll come in front of you quarterly, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, since it's been called a data-driven software, I do want there to be concrete data. I don't totally understand the. Moving effects of an anecdote, but you know, if we have a baseline, this is where we are on these five metrics, and then after we've implemented it. Here's the change that we've made, that's gonna be useful.
Absolutely.
Um, and then, uh, I know that the, back to the funding, and it, it comes, and this is where I, I. Echo a lot of what, um, first, just I echo a lot of what Michael just recapped, um, with his. His appreciation of the process and um qualms about the nature of the product. Um, the, the funding source is via the police foundation, which um. Does not have to disclose its donors' sources to us. Do you know who the donor is? I'm not gonna ask you to identify. The person or the institution or the company, but are you, do you get that information?
The person who is funding it or the, the organization is the police foundation. Uh, I don't know who all their donors are.
Okay, so, so whoever donates to the police foundation is kept anonymous to the.
It's my understanding they also get money through grants and like any other nonprofit.
Okay.
So what, what are you saying? We're trying to, you know, we're not.
I, I think Michael said everything perfectly, and I'm just gonna second.
Okay.
What you said.
So, um, and I want to thank all of my colleagues and everyone for the input and questions. This is very good. This is the process that we want. I particularly want to thank um Chief Koches for his outreach on this. I know it was a lot to do. And, you know, I've been on council there for twenty-seven months, and this is probably one more difficult decisions I've, I've made because I understand that. This could potentially misuse of this information could impact um the community of color, of people that look like me at a higher rate. Um, I appreciate the outreach that you've done because um I've heard from the individuals, but also did my own outreach to the community over the last thirty years. Just developed a lot of, um, just, um. Wonderful community outreach, whether it's from ministers, community leaders, both young and old. Um, and I, I, I leaned on them in this particular situation. And, and also talk with contacts in in Richmond where it's also in use as a pilot, uh, I believe. Um, when I reached out to the public, I shared the same concerns that we talked about today about, um. Over concerns of over policing and the kind of the big brothers, I shared that with them, and they, uh, and for the most part, they understood that. Um, but it was overwhelming support. What I heard is that they want the police to have this um tool. Um, and um, just on occasion, you know, we mentioned this in Richmond, um. The police were able to apprehend some suspects over a young girl who was. Um, shot in the crossfire, they were able to identify some suspects in that. As well as the shooting, it was just a few blocks away from the police station where there was a partial color of it. And I understand that these are like anecdotes, but these are, you know, situations where um a crime, um suspects. Potentially have been caught, um, you know, and I can't verify these things, but I feel comfortable that, that, um. That, um, that they're true. Um, and based on this input, I'm gonna su- support the use of flock as a pilot. I am, you know, looking forward to those interim updates and and. Um, Natalie had mentioned kind of a baseline of data of where we are now and what, and what, you know, the difference that we will see. And, um, and, you know, during the two-two ones, we asked some, some difficult questions, um, and in particular, Lloyd leaned on this. Cuz I had a concern, like, I understand it's gonna be within the Commonwealth of Virginia, but what if you have a jurisdiction that. May want to share with someone else outside of the Commonwealth, and and they have to go through that same process of. Putting in the purpose and the use of the information as well. While it's not perfect, um, I will support, and I look forward to the interim um updates, and um, so thank you so much. Any other questions or comments at this point? Um, at this point, um, there's no closed session, um, and we'll come back here, um, at. It's, I'm sorry, did you want to?
Yeah, so I, I guess we've given chief the direction he needs to.
Yes, yes, yes. So you have, um.
Okay.
Thank you, yes. Um, we're gonna come back at um six thirty, and for those who will be, um, joining us via Zoom, that will be a different. Link, so I see you all back here in about um thirty, thirty-five, uh, forty minutes.